It is 5:30 if we could call the May 20th Amherst Supportive Education Meeting to order by standing foot, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just for the love of God, and God's just for all.
Bill, come please.
Mr. Zappa?
Here.
Ms. Skellos?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Dr. Messer?
Present.
Mrs. Wackels?
Here.
A recommendation to adopt a gen is presented including all addendums?
Sumo.
Support. Bill, please.
Ms. Skellos?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Good news report. So let's start with Mr. Tepper.
Thanks for stopping by Powers Elementary School. Once we get it ready. Yeah, we just wanted to share, uh, thank you everybody, thank the school board for being here at Powers Elementary. Uh, just, it's been an interesting year. We got started, uh, had an interesting start to the school year with our timing of everything, but we started with a bang. We started with some new, uh, new ceremonies, some new process. We had signs up to welcome students on the first day of school. Uh, really that comes down to, I don't know. Oh, there it is. Uh, the first thing I wanted to mention is just how grateful we are for our parent community. Uh, we have parents that show up in a lot of different ways for us, including those signs on the first day of school, uh, that were funded by our PTO. So I wanted to take a moment to recognize our, a board of our PTO. There are four baskets on the back there that I've asked a couple if I can have our two PTO board member representatives to, to stand up for a minute. So we could not do what we do here at Powers from the very base level, like the first day of school, having some signs and decorations, to the interventions that we put in place that they help to celebrate our PBIS efforts by funding things that happen, but also by being here physically supporting stores once a month so that students can come spend money, uh, that they have earned through incentives for having good behavior. It all comes down to their support. So if we could just please recognize them, uh, for a moment. There are four gift baskets for the four board members along with Kelly for her work PBIS, uh, related to, um, just a thank you from each grade level, uh, collected, uh, gifts for you in that box. So thank you. So thank you. Please take those. Thank you. Um, in addition to that, our parents show up a lot of ways. Really cool thing that started two years ago was, uh, Mike and I had this conversation about wouldn't it be cool, just like the seniors have, uh, signs in front of their house saying they are a, a senior? Wouldn't it be cool if they had, they had earned signs for their class? I think we started with 2035. I knew once we'd started it that they would become like, we're gonna have to do this every year. Once we get it rolling, these parents are gonna want that sign in front of their house. It's really turning into a positive and this year, celebrating our PTO, they have agreed to take on that funding because we've been trying to fund it ourselves. And so we're grateful for them. So we gave them recognition this year. That is the sign that's gonna be in, in, uh, yards of our students and starting, I guess, the parents are coming in August. Parents also show up for something I wanted people to know, parents show up for our events. That's a, one of our assemblies. People may or may not know this. We have to hold every grade level concert, just a concert for kids. Let's say first grade wants to have a music concert. We can only have half a grade level at a time show up for a musical event because this entire place, all the way to the back, when those doors are open, all the way back to the gym are filled only, and that's even just half of one grade level. Our parents show up for events here and we're very grateful for the support that they provide us. In addition to that, they show up for things like, there you go, uh, reading cafes for our kindergarten team. Uh, every year our kindergartners learn to read and then they get to celebrate that moment where they have really, they are actually able to read enough that they can read to their parents. We have parents coming for every grade level class and we have a reading cafe where they are celebrated with a very formal event. Uh, these are just a sampling of pictures, but I wanted you to know, we celebrate parents and parents show up for daily events as well as, wait, there we go. What was under there? Um, as well as, we started some new traditions or brought some traditions back. A couple of years ago, we started having, we used to have principals', um, popsicles with the principal of the park. Uh, we transitioned that to having popsicles with the principal in the PTO here. Last year was an event, it's kind of dark, I should have tried to lighten it up, but we had so many people show up for that event that we had to do extra runs for popsicles because we ran out. It was a really turned into a very positive event that starts or kicks off our school year. We brought, we have a collaboration with the ballet company that comes in every year and our students this year, you can see them performing ballet moves and entire grade level of students. And we brought back the Santa Claus, Santa's Workshop event that used to exist at Powers Elementary and we brought it back this year. So trying to bring back some of those past practices and really celebrate with our kids. I'm gonna turn it over to Mary Scott Williams.
Hi, a little bit about people or other things. Hello, everyone. Um, so along with the beautiful parent support that we have here in Amherst, um, this year at Powers Elementary, we actually brought in, um, Best Buddies Program and Big Comments, Little Comments. We're exceptionally proud of these programs, um, that facilitate connectivity, connecting students with peer mentors at the junior highs. So Big Comments, Little Comments, actually junior high students walk here and they have partnered up with students that need connection. They need a good role model and we facilitate once a week, um, activities and events for them to just feel good and to feel like they have somebody they can connect with and talk with. Um, it is something we're gonna continue next year and that partnership with the junior high is outstanding. Um, we're very thankful for that. Uh, Best Buddies is beautiful. It's in various buildings across the district, um, and it's a program that just supports inclusivity and connecting students with, um, just peer relationships and trying to get students with disabilities, with students without disabilities and bringing everybody together to, um, just form relationships and form relationships that might not be typical. Um, and we actually do this event once a week. We've paired students up. We've encouraged friendship and even this year is with that top corner picture, um, we actually had our Best Buddies come to Special Olympics this year and we had a whole cheering section. It was quite remarkable. It was wonderful in a way that only Amherst had, a student cheering section. So I was very proud of that and we were really excited and we had a blast. The kids thought it was awesome. Uh, so along with this addition with Comic Pride, we also have, um, seeing this maybe tricky. Uh, we have also just truly put a lot of time and energy, our whole building, into our PBIS efforts, uh, which is truly part of encouraging students to make positive behavior choices. How do we teach students explicit behavior? Like what does that need to look like? What does it sound like? And how do we reinforce it? Oftentimes people think PBIS is a token economy, right? Like I'm gonna give you a trinket if you do good. Um, we've worked so hard in this building to make it something that you work hard because it's the right thing to do. Um, we've also incorporated, not only can you buy trinkets? Yes, it does exist. Some kids like the lollipop. It's a motivator. But, um, we also purchase experiences so where students will save their comic cash to buy time with the police officer or like a child on the far right bought time to read to my fish. It was the most precious thing you'll ever see. Uh, she was very excited and loved every minute of it. Um, but our PBIS is something we are very proud of, um, where we are teaching students how to make good choices, how to do school, how to walk in a line, how to wait your turn, how to ask for help in an appropriate way. Um, and I really contribute that to our whole team. Our building here is outstanding. Our staff is wonderful and it takes all of us to do that. Um, so not only with our Comic Pride, with Best Buddies, Big Comments, as well as PBIS, um, we've done a great job this year of just celebrating students and staff. You know, every staff meeting, we have a raffle, we laugh, we giggle. We're just also trying to bring back more just fun and smiles because that's, the job's hard. Like we, the job's not an easy one, but we're all in it together. And if we can smile and laugh along the way and celebrate all the hard work we do, it just is, um, you know, it makes it a little easier. Along with that, uh, we have a beautiful billboard if you've ever, um, seen it. I don't know, I don't remember where it's located. Trying to do it.
They had to move it because they put it in out of Amherst and then realized they have to move it into Amherst. They must have mixed two things or something. So there, I think it's gonna be on Highway Two. I think it's getting moved to Highway Two. I don't know if it's there yet.
Yeah, so Soren won this, um, contest and his picture is actually advertised publicly and it's gorgeous and beautiful. Um, so thank you for giving us an opportunity to share. Thanks, Martin, for letting me talk. But we are very proud of the wonderful things we do and I know you wanted to contribute.
And I just wanted people to know one last thing. I know a lot of people here know, but we actually, you know, we've spoken to the board before about the things that you as a board have helped us to do by giving us the, uh, sixth special. It allowed us to do a lot of things. And one of those things is improve how we provide intervention to kids. I wanted the board to know that that got recognized this year by the Making Schools Work ANEO Excellence in Education Award that we received specifically for doing the things that you've allowed us to do. As a board supporting us to provide intervention to kids is now getting recognized at the state level and we couldn't do that without you, the board, supporting us. As you heard us loud and clear that we needed to do something different to help reach our students who are struggling with reading and we're now getting recognized for it. We've been done about you. So thank you. And thank you for having us today.
Thank you, Brian. Sarah?
My turn. So I am very pleased to be sharing our Crystal Apple 2024 winners with you today. So when your name is called, um, we have five people receiving the Crystal Apple Award this year. Two were unable to make it because they're gonna be out of town, so we'll, we'll celebrate them. But three of you I know are here in the audience because I've seen you. But when you hear your name, come on up. I have some amazing, um, words to share with you from the person who nominated you. And then we have your, um, Crystal Apple Award to take with you. So after I do this, we're going to, Mr. Mulnar is going to spend a few moments honoring our retirees who are also here. Um, we were taking attendance as you were walking in, so we need to make sure we were honoring all of you appropriately. Um, but then we're gonna take a break and we would like a picture with all the Crystal Apple Award winners, um, at that time. So just so that you're aware. But the first person I have to honor today is Deanna Miranda. Deanna is here with, as a part of the PTO and Amherst Soccer Association. You were nominated by Jessica Stellwagen for your work with NORD. And Ms. Stellwagen says, Deanna is continually giving back to the schools and our students. She is the coach for Amherst Soccer and very involved in the Amherst schools. She continually volunteers her time, money, and energy in my classroom as she has done at Powers. Deanna is someone not, who not only wants the best for her, her own children in our district, but also the other children in our schools. She has donated snacks, supplies, and her time to ensure that students have what they need. She has been a blessing this school year to me and my students. All right, the next one, Ms. Linda Sehhi. Ms. Sehhi is a retired volunteer. She was nominated by Tina Dever for her work in Powers Elementary. And Ms. Dever says, Ms. Sehhi faithfully volunteers every Monday. She stays the entire day working with students one-on-one or in small groups. She does errands, makes hobbies, and has a great rapport with the students. I believe Paxton has a gift for you. So join me in, thank you. All right. Um, next one is Mrs. Nicole Waddell. Uh, she was unable to be here today, but she is affiliated with our PTO. She was actually nominated by two people, uh, Principal Brian Tepper and also Jessica Stellwagen for her work in Powers Elementary and NORD Middle School. So, reading some of the words, Nicole has been a wonderful and consistent presence in my classroom this year. This is from Ms. Stellwagen. She goes above and beyond in everything she does. Nicole has volunteered countless hours in my classroom for various experiments, hands-on projects, and classroom events. Not only has she volunteered her time and energy to the benefit of my students, but she has also donated numerous supplies and snacks to help students who are in need. I feel so fortunate to have had her helping me and my students this year. But we will hold on to this one for her. And the next one is Sam Hamatkar. Sam is affiliated with Rock Point Church and he was nominated by Chad DiFranco up at the, at the high school. Mr. DiFranco says, Sam is the most unselfish and caring person I have met. He is here on days when he is not working because he knows he can help our students. He hangs out and talks to each other about a variety of topics. He brightens everyone's day when he is around. Thank you, Sam. And then finally, our last Crystal Apple recipient is Valerie Neider, who is also out of town. Um, she was nominated by Rob Black for her work with the Common Athletic Booster. And Mr. Black said that Valerie is very selfish and caring and has helped out, um, for years. So, thank you very much. Your turn, yes. I will get it.
All right, we're also here, of course, say to honor our retirees. We have 12 retirees this year, which is quite, quite a group, right? More than usual. I don't know if that's a good thing, but, um, no, we're gonna, we're gonna miss all of you very much. Um, we have a short video to introduce the retirees. Watch that in the first moment. And after we watch the video, we'll have each one stand along with your families that you're here with to recognize you and also just hear a little bit from you, just share with the board about your time in Amherst, um, and your experience here. So, uh, Sarah, are you ready?
I am ready.
All right, that was the short video we have to introduce everyone. Uh, yeah, I actually also created a longer video that we'll actually put on, on YouTube and put on social media for the end of school year where we have comments from various, uh, staff members and videos of sharing, uh, different stories and things. So we'll, we'll share that in the near future for the end of school year. So at this time, when I call your name, I'd like you to stand up. I would love if those that are joining you would stand up as well, uh, just so we could recognize all of you and your families together and friends. Um, and so let's start with, uh, first, Chaz Durmer, science teacher at Steel High School. Chaz, would you share who's with you today?
This is my wife Nicole and my daughter is Julian.
All right. And I'd like to take the moment, it's all about you and I'd like you to share if you wouldn't mind, put you on the spot. Uh, no, very simply, um, it's always fascinating to hear which staff members have been here, you know, how long. Some have been in multiple buildings, multiple classrooms, multiple containers. Some retirees have been here in one spot, one classroom possibly for their entire career. So would you mind just sharing with the board your career here in Amherst, who you've been here?
Officially, my hire date is, uh, June 24th, 1991, but I started a long-term subposition, um, March of that year for a junior high math teacher. Had a ski injury and decided to retire. So I've been here since then. Uh, I did that the rest of that year and four following years as a math teacher at the junior high, which I think will take off my time in purgatory. And, um, then I transferred to the high school and I was mostly in math at first and gradually transitioned over to science, which is what I wanted, um, as I waited for Roy McCullough to retire. He was the previous physics teacher for the previous, no. And, uh, he retired about, after I worked about 13 years and I've been the physics guy since then. So that's pretty much what I've been doing.
And before you sit down, uh, we, I, I would love to hear what your future plans are. I mean, you're so young. You have so much more to do in life. We'd love to hear what, what your future plans are.
Uh, well, I'm, I'm looking forward to living a life that's not dictated by when the bell rings. Um, I've got lots of hobbies that I've either just started or have had and have that time. Like, I got back into community, doing, acting in community theater. I've started beekeeping and learning how to fly fish. I've always been a hunter and shooter and, and school doesn't work well with being into hunting because the school year is when hunting season is. So definitely more time for that, uh, and travel with my lovely wife and making sure my kid gets through college, although that's not really worried. Um, and so that's pretty much it. And maybe some kind of part-time work that doesn't have any stress.
Chaz, thank you for your service. We appreciate you being here and all of your, you guys, you and, uh, science department and all of yours in physics, which is not something that any of us probably would know how to teach, but we thank you for your service.
I'm sure I do.
Thank you. Next, we want to celebrate Ron Ritzko. Ron, would you please stand and go? Who's with you today?
My wife, Laura. Sister-in-law, Martha. My youngest son, Justin. His friend, Ailey. Uh, my oldest, Jacob, and his friend, Casey. And, uh, my little son, um, Jason was able to be here. He's with NASA and his wife, Annie.
Thank you all for being here. Ron, can you share a little about your journey? I think you, I think you're the retiring with the longest career, starting back in 1988.
I go way back. October 28th, 1988, I started here. Well, I actually tried to get a couple other times before that time because the previous place I was working, um, was gonna be sold or whatever, so I had to move on. Yeah, I was involved with plumbing and sheet metal work, uh, various different tasks, art. And then, uh, there was an opening here. I put this goal, the one guy that, I took this position was out on medical, so they had waited years, so I fell right into a system maintenance at that time, right after that. So I've been in the same position for 36 point, whatever years, um, same, went through a lot of few different superintendent. I started off with, um, Mr. Dolmitch, um, then a few others up there, you know, Mike Mulnar. Um, then I went through some supervisors. I started off with Ken Galati at the time and there was a few beyond that. And then I went Chuck Bremet and then led on, um, board numbers, there were a few, um, and then teachers and everything and I knew everybody because I was like the mayor at the time. Everybody from my previous job and then I ended up, now I hardly know anybody. So.
Ron, we just thank you for all your service. Um, again, yeah, you've been here for, for so long. You've seen everything.
You've seen it all. Right. I can, right, a big book.
And can you just share what, what plans you have?
Uh, my plans are, um, take a little time to myself, vacationing, um, got family in different areas, California, Chicago, St. Louis, Florida. So I'm gonna do all that because I do, most involved with rental properties, um, don't have no more of those. Um, then I also did side work and jobs, so I'm probably gonna continue that. Plus I had a couple other options that were confronted to me I was able to do and let alone, I'm big into muscle cars.
Well, congratulations and thank you for your service. Thank you. Next, we have John Schmidtkens from AJH. John? Well, you've been here since 1991.
Correct.
Could you share who's with you this evening?
I'm with Sarah.
All right. And could you share a little bit about your career, where you've been in the district?
From 91, I was hired by Ruth Williams to sub as a bus driver. I did that for a year and a half. This opportunity was open to me to get started at Junior High. It's the old Junior High. It was, uh, as a head custodian. It was interesting because there were only three people that applied for the job. So, uh, like about eight years later, they were hiring 35 to 40 people. And I always said, if I had to compete with all those people, I'd have never got hired. So, so, uh, but I've been at junior high level my whole career from that point.
Thanks. What are your future plans that you have?
Try to get caught up with things. Like my mom was behind. So my kids all need things, so I helped them with a lot of practical, fix-it jobs, so it's not that much different.
As everyone can tell, John, we're gonna miss your patience if they're called to meet her and your ability to just keep things grounded and level, um, and, and kind of a chaotic world sometimes. So thank you for your service, John. Next, we want to celebrate Kay Sutton. Kay, would you please stand?
Steven? Uh, this is my husband, Mike.
And, uh, can you share about your career?
Um, I started as a sub and then I moved into auxiliary tutor, which probably doesn't even exist anymore, where I serviced the students at St. Joe's, um, but I worked for Amherst. And then I was a Title I tutor and then after that I was, I fourth grade teacher for most of my career and had all three Mulnar children. And then, um, I just recently, the last four years or so, I moved to third grade.
So what, what buildings had you been in? Cause some have closed, some have been built new?
I was, uh, started at Harris, well, the auxiliary building, which was a little building behind Powers with four people in it. And then I moved to Harris and spent my entire career at Harris, most of it. And then when they closed Harris, I had to go to NORD for a couple years while they built the new building. And then I came here, back to Harris. It's still Harris, always Harris. And to finish up, so.
Um, and so what, do you have a future plan? And what's, what's next for you?
We have a lot of plans. Right now, we are finishing packing our house and on Friday, 31st, we are moving to Cedar Key, Florida. Woo! Nice. One more step. We're down a step, so.
Well, from the Mulnar family, Mulnar children, we'd love having you. Thank you for your service. All of you, your good reason. All right, next, we're gonna celebrate a man, Bill Walker. Bill?
I'm here by myself. I didn't know I was supposed to bring anybody.
Well, actually, we're also, we'd love to celebrate your wife, Colleen Walker. But I'll let you explain why you're here by yourself.
Well, Colleen's in Florida. June first, I moved to Palm Coast. I'm living on a canal with a boat in my backyard, and it's paradise. And I'll probably be surfing a little bit, fishing a little bit, golfing a little bit, enjoying life.
So can you share a little about your career, not only just with the classroom, but also that you've been a part of a lot of other activities and sports?
I was hired by Howard Dolmitch, a truly great man. I call him a friend. And I've been here thirty-two years. Been head wrestling coach for most of those thirty-two years. Head freshman coach for thirty-two years. Assistant athletic director for ten years. But what I really like to say is, I was able to teach with my wife, and I had all four of my kids in class. And I was able to watch them grow, and I'm truly blessed how they've grown up. And some of the teachers that were involved in their life, principals and things like that. They're all over America, and I got really good jobs. And I can't say enough about Amherst schools. Very proud to be employed here. For one more week.
Well, like all the retirees, we want to thank you and your wife for your service. It's those kind of stories of people who just have embedded themselves in our community and our school district for their whole career. To make it, you're passionate, so thank you very much. Next, we want to celebrate Katie Wolver. Katie, please stand and those with you.
This is my husband, Tom Hall.
Mike, just sharing your career here, you've done so many wonderful things here in Amherst.
Yes, thank you. I came here in two thousand and two. I'd been teaching for twelve years in Harrisburg, Ohio, and really enjoyed that, that after nine eleven happened. And after my nephew was diagnosed with leukemia, I was looking to move back home, to be part of the family. And Judy Alexander called me and said, there's a teacher who's taking a sudden leave of absence. Can you fill in? And this was the first week of August. And can you be here next week? So, packed everything up, said goodbye to a few close friends, and came here. Taught under Greg Ring, who was an excellent principal and the most professional administrator I've ever known. Grades five and six at Schub. We did English Language Arts and every subject gifted. So, I also went to school and got my gifted degree, so I could figure out how to do that, which I was already doing. And then when the new junior high was built, I managed to move into a job for gifted students in grade seven and eight. And then we added honors English Language Arts for grade seven and eight. And then the sixth graders came in. And we got honors language arts for gifted language arts for the sixth graders as well. And I was very pleased to work under Mr. Ryan Coleman, who was an outstanding principal. And because of this leadership and his ability to bring together our building and our students, our parents, we were able to obtain a national Blue Ribbon status. And I was, I think the high point of my career was accepting that award in DC on behalf of my colleagues with Mr. Coleman and Mr. Sayers. And, of course, advised a bunch of things, spelling bee, chess club, academic team. Taking kids to a competition in Chicago was definitely memorable. And I'm just happy to be finishing my career with my fellow classmate, Kay Sutton. And the guy who was a year ahead of me in school, Jess Durmer. Things didn't end maybe the way I hoped for, but I think things are gonna be all right.
And I thank you for mentioning the Blue Ribbon Awards, you're such a crucial part of that, so thank you for mentioning that. And also, just thinking about your career, I mean, how many hundreds of students you prepared?
Including horse.
Yeah. Now, at first, high school and the Raiders of Honors and AP and now College Credit Plus. But also, you know, how many dozens of students are employed through college and the tops of their class? So, thank you for everything you've done in this district, all of your business.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to doing some gardening, reading a lot of books, just basically soaking up books. And I'm glad to be able to be around to take care of our families as they need us.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Wendy Zimmerman. Wendy, please stand.
Today, as a speech-language pathologist, I love to talk. So, I'm gonna watch nonverbals, and if I'm going on too long, I'll stop. Well, I have to start first by telling everybody, I didn't even know that Amherst existed when I moved here. I lived down near Columbus, and my husband at the time got a job in Cleveland. I got a job in Sandusky at the time, and we were looking for a place to live. And everybody kept saying, Amherst, Amherst, Amherst. Oh damn, this is my young son, you know, I need a good school for him. And quickly, Amherst became my home. I'm not from here, but it's my home. When I got divorced, my son grew up, moved away, I wanted to stay in Amherst. So that's why I'm here alone. I have lots of family, but they're not in Amherst, but this is my home. So, thank you all for making it my home. Everybody's so wonderful. Little bit about me. I taught near Columbus, actually in Marion, for eleven years when we moved up here. I taught a couple years in Sandusky. I had eleven years' experience, interviewed here, where my son was going to school, and was so fortunate enough to get the job. I was interviewed by Tim Logar, who was the Director of Special Education. Dan Trent was principal at Harris at the time. One of my intervention specialists was Sarah that I worked with.
She's probably had a right big sigh of grief.
So, uh, just a lot of cool things to talk about. But I've worked at every school except for the high school, so I've done every age level. I'd hate to guess how many thousands of kids I've worked with. I love it all. I have mixed feelings. I'm excited about retirement, but I'm sad, because I don't know how to not be a speech-language pathologist. I've been doing this now for almost forty years. You know, I taught here, I taught overall thirty-six, I figured out point three-three years, twenty-five in the beginning of Amherst. So, I don't know how to not be a speech-language pathologist. So this is gonna be an adjustment for me. I do have a grown son who lives in Chardin with his wife and five boys, so obviously, I'm a lot of time out there. My parents, I'm actually from Ashland, my brother, so I'll be able to help my parents out a lot. You know, I'm planning on starting a book club, not joining, I want to start my own book club. Just, I don't know, I'll volunteer. I want to drive for Meals on Wheels. I want to, I'm gonna volunteer for Special Olympics. You know, I want to volunteer. But anyway, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to work here. It's wonderful. Thank you.
I think I've hit all the retirees that are intent to say that some could make it. Before we wrap up, I'd like Dave Velli to come up, our Human Resource Director. He wanted to share what we have for you, so I'm a state representative. Dave, I'll let you turn over and explain what we got.
Okay. Representative Joe Miller was nice enough in his office to write out some nice notes to each one of the retirees. Comment, commenting your retirements. So, as we get ready for pictures and things like that, I'll make sure I pass those out to each person. So, I'd like to do that now and it will take pictures with it. So, Ron, the first ones. Some may have been potentially mailed home?
Yeah.
Okay. John, is yours? Did you get one at home? Okay, perfect. Cause he sent the rest over here, so hopefully we have the rest. Uh, Bill Walker?
Jess?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. What happened? And Cheryl was. Okay, we'll make sure she gets that. So again, I want to just thank all of our retirees and all our families who are here. Wonderful job this evening. I did not tell anyone of you that I was gonna have you be the speaker this evening. But I felt it was important, because again, even though you shared just a small snippet of your time here, a little bit of your story, it's all your stories that make the fabric of this district so wonderful. You're all leaving a legacy of thousands and thousands of children, families impacted. And we just can't thank you enough. We'll always be a part of combination. We hope to see you around as much as possible, unless you're in Florida or somewhere else, then send us pictures, but.
Right.
But you're one who'll come back, because you'll always be family. So, thank you so much. We're gonna take a few moments now to have some time, to just have some fellowship and time together with some snacks, cookies, and drinks. Before we do, before we take off and do that, though, I would love to have both a picture with our board and our Crystal Apple winners, and our board and all of our retirees. So, if we can, as soon as I release everyone, if we can have all of our board members joining us, step behind by the green curtain. All of our Crystal Apple winners go first, then we'll swap out the retirees. And we'd love to have a picture of all of you with our board and together, okay? Where's she at?
No, it's Mike.
Nobody? Nobody? Okay, Amy, I guess you're up. Fun begins.
David Conley is going to be his honorary president this evening, from Rockville, Ohio.
Hello.
Hi.
Good to see you all. Do I need a microphone?
No, wait, you're welcome. You gotta point it up.
All right. It's good to see everyone this evening. Before I begin my presentation, I just want to express to you as a visitor, how nice it was to hear from your retirees. I sit through so many board meetings, it would make your head spin. And you will be amazed to know that so few school districts give their teachers and others that work with their school district their entire careers an opportunity to even say thank you. I mean, it's generally in and out the door, and I just think it says a lot. I, you know, I just want to express to you, it shows the character of this board, the administration, and the love of the community. So, just want to say that before we get into the fun stuff. As you all know, I am David Conley, the district's financial consultant. We are about to swoop into a segment of a project for the district relative to the financing. Tonight, we have a resolution that is before the board for consideration to move us to the next stage of that process. I wanted to go through the whole picture before you all vote on that resolution this evening. Make sure that there aren't any questions that are unanswered, or I can provide some specifics. So, in terms of just the financing overview, at this point, and we'll talk about the details of the resolution in a second. I know you all read that, and you have a ton of questions. But the resolution authorizes the district to borrow up to twenty million dollars, is a maximum number. So the resolution sets a ceiling on the amount that we can borrow. The proceeds of that financing will be used for two primary projects. The transportation facility, which is estimated somewhere between fifteen and sixteen million. And improvement Memorial Field, which are somewhere between five and six million. And we are planning to pay that back over a period of thirty years. Actually, thirty years is the maximum term that you can borrow under a certificate of participation. We have targeted borrowing enough money that where the annual payment would not exceed a million twenty thousand. And the reason that number is important is because when we did the replacement of the district's permanent improvement levy, that was the amount of money that was to be generated as a result, the extra income as a result of the replacement. So we backed into about how much we can finance. We're using interest rates right now, estimated as of today. But I want to make sure that you all have your hands around this dollar amount aspect. Interest rates, as they move up and down, change the principal amount that you can borrow. So as rates go up, the amount you can borrow goes down. As rates come down, the amount you can borrow goes up. And we don't have any control over that until June the sixth. So on the morning of June the sixth, whatever the interest rates are, that will tell us how much we can afford using a payment of a million twenty thousand. And so that will be kind of the mystery until that particular day. With that said, the resolution, and I'll get to this in a second, empowers your chief financial officer to make the determination on the day that we sell as to how much we actually sell, up to a maximum of the twenty billion dollars. So on the next slide. All right, yeah, so on the next slide, I wanted to take a second for us to just sort of embrace the possibility. So I use interest rates as of today. I want to show you that right now, if we dedicated just the one million twenty thousand a year at current interest rates, you would be able to finance sixteen million seven oh five. If we took that number to seventeen million nine eighty, our payment would be one million twenty thousand at current interest rates. And if we went to the full twenty million dollars, we would be at one million two forty-two. So those, so the seventeen million nine and the twenty million would both exceed what we've currently budgeted or earmarked for this financing. And so the reason I show you that is that this project has the potential to be a little more than sixteen billion seven oh five, as you remember from the first slide. So I just want to make sure that you have some perspective around what the payment differentials would look like at the same interest rate, based on, you know, really based on the payment amount on an annual basis. So you can see sort of the spectrum, if you will, of what you would be looking at. So if we were selling those COPS issues today, the COPS issue today, we'd only be able to raise sixteen million seven oh five, if we did it today. Our hopes are that interest rates will go a little better. I will tell you that we work, and I'll talk about the team in a second, but we do work with Stiefel. Stiefel is the bond underwriting company. They provide us these interest rates. I will assure you that the estimates they give us are a little conservative, simply because we're kind of a few weeks away from this process. But I wanted you to kind of have some perspective on that.
So you think the interest rates could go up?
They could, they could go. Interest rates could go up or down.
No, I'm just thinking, like, what do you think?
Right. They go up or down. I have to, I have to look through so many weird things. It's hard to say. I mean, when, you know, when I think rates are going down, then they go up, and then, you know, and vice versa. In the, in the old days, when interest rates were tied on actual financial data, it was easier to predict. But now it's tied to news, like, you know, geopolitical events, you know, a rocket launch could, could create a change in interest rates. So it's really, it's not as easy as it used to be. But I would hope at a minimal, we would at least be here, right? And not significantly worse than when we started out with the process.
Dave, before we get too far, on that first slide, it was like twenty-two million. What you had figured, so where do we go if it's over two-nine?
So that's a good question. And, you know, this is not like a traditional financing slash project. If you, when we did this particular building, the voters approved a fixed bond amount, and the taxes specifically paid that fixed bond amount. So, you had that fixed bond amount, you went to the architect and said, this is all we can afford. This is it. We've got that amount of money the voters gave us. When you do a certificate of participation, there's no ceiling except for what you all feel you can afford to pay every single year. So a COPS payment simply has an annual, it's a rental payment. And that rental payment is subject to opinion, as to what you feel you can afford to pay on an annual basis. We backed into that number based on how much we generated from the replacement of the PI levy. So, we just simply said, theoretically, we're doing the replacement levy. The replacement levy will give us an extra one million twenty thousand dollars a year. Let's just use that amount of money. And if we just used that amount of money, at the time, it was supported about seventeen million dollars. Somewhere around there. So this circumstance is different than a VOD bond issue. This circumstance is simply, how do you, how much do you feel you could afford for this particular project? In addition to that, you know, you have the flexibility, if you wanted to do, support it other ways. You could put cash into the project, for example, things like that. But ultimately, we try to stick with what we originally planned. And that original plan was the million twenty, based on the replacement. Is that clear, slide?
So, so if we go for like the twenty million, which is that many thousand? And let's say that it ends up being twenty-two million. We would have to come up with the difference.
Or you would have to say, all we have to spend is twenty million.
And we can't do it.
You would work, yeah, you would work, so your CFO, who's responsible for making the final, you know, the final financial decisions that impact the district, you know, would say, do we have any other sources available to us? If not, that's, that's all you get, is twenty million bucks.
But there is wiggle room in there with the way the interest rates may, may affect it, meaning seventeen million or sixteen million. meaning, you know, $17 million or $16 million we're going to generate. If the interest rates are favorable, then we could grow that.
Right. So, the wiggle room, so $20 million is the maximum. So, the resolution tonight sets the absolute maximum you can borrow. If rates were to drop to 4%, for example, uh, it's possible you might be able to borrow $20,500,000. But because we set the maximum at $20 million, you'll only be able to borrow the $20 million.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean we expect $20 million.
Correct. Yeah, that, that's correct. So, um, you know, so...
There's a, there's a lot at play here, though. So, $20 million is most that the board is authorizing us to issue in, in certificates of participation. Um, if the project exceeds that, you either value engineer or eliminate projects from the total project, right? But you also, you're also going to have substantial amount of interest investment revenue. And I mean, it was estimated that we would have somewhere around $700,000 generated off of the $17 million COPs issuance. So, we were to issue $19 million or $19 and a half million, we can likely expect more.
Okay.
Disclaimer, so long as all things remain equal and the market is favorable. But, um, so, I think that's what Mark was saying, the upper limit, go to the prior slide, babe. The upper limit of the project is $16 million plus six, 22. I think the question is basically, where is it coming from? If we issue 20, we need to find 2. We have, you know, $800,000 or a million in interest, we have to find a million or 1.2. That might be from additional PI, because you're going to talk about this. We're going to put off the initial debt service payment to June of '25, right?
Right.
So, that will generate another whole year of collection and a permanent improvement fund. Thank you.
Sure.
Great. And so, in terms of the next steps, the, so the resolution in front of you tonight, I want to make sure I just hit the, the key things that you're agreeing to do. In that resolution, it establishes, uh, the purposes for how you use the money and the sites for which that money will be used. If you remember, this is a lease, so we're actually using the, the sites themselves as the, as the basis for the lease. Uh, we have the maximum number, uh, amount of financing, the term, the terms of the lease in terms of when the payments are made and who's responsible for what, and that's documentation that Amy has, and it's about that tall, um, that has all the back and forth in it. Um, we will need to create certain funds relative to the flow of money, which will, I think the funds probably already exist, but in the documentation, it describes an expense account, for example, to handle the payment of expenses and so on. Uh, the resolution authorizes you to retain your financing team, which today isn't technically, even though we've been working, uh, technically retained for the purposes of doing this project. So, your financing team is made up of Squire Patton Boggs, which is the district's, uh, legal advisor, bond counsel. That's Mike Shaw, uh, Stiefel Nicholas, uh, which is, uh, Michelle Bill Strub and her team, and they're the ones that's responsible for selling these certificates to investors. So, they, in our business, we call it underwriting. They're the ones that underwrite the financing. So, they find the investors, negotiate the interest rates on our behalf, and then finalize the transaction. And then the third party is, is Rock Mill, your municipal advisor. My job is to oversee their work to make sure that they are negotiating the lowest possible interest rate on behalf of the district, and that they're doing all things proper to produce the best results. So, those are the three team members. Uh, we also then in the resolution establish the terms for the COPs payments as they are made over time. And again, it's, it's simply a lease payment, because this is a lease purchase transaction. Uh, that payment is subject to annual appropriation, so the board always has the power not to appropriate the payment for this, for this financing, which means that your landlord will have the right to seize your improvements. So, it's a very important fact to remember, that this and future boards could create absolute havoc if, if that were to ever happen. Uh, it has never happened with an Ohio school district, and there are a lot of insurance actions out there today. Uh, but it just doesn't mean that it can't happen, yes.
If we can go that way, can they revoke it this way?
No. The, the, your landlord?
Yeah.
No, they cannot. They, it's only if you fail to make your, make your payment. And outside of that, uh, no, granted, they're gonna, they're gonna work with you if you ever have a problem, because who else is going to use, use the service garage in a, you know, in, uh, the field down there. So, um, so there's the approval of the transaction agreements and documents, all of which are on file, and if you all want to take the time to review them. But if not, your, your financing team is spending lots of time reviewing and writing. Uh, the, the resolution also grants the authority to your CFO to, to actually execute this transaction on the 6th, or the 7th, or the 8th. The reason we do it this way is that the market is unpredictable. Uh, we used to be able to actually do a sale and come to the board meeting on the day of the board meeting, and then the board would accept the terms of the sale. But the markets are so unpredictable, you'd have to be ready to do a board meeting like that, and it's, it's not practical. So, the resolution sets maximums and then gives Amy the authority to, to act on your behalf, if you will. And that way, because the market isn't going to wait a week or two weeks for your approval. So, uh, the, the resolution authorizes a maximum of 7% simply because we have to have a maximum. If the interest rates are at 7%, we're probably going to come back and have a conversation about this, because, you know, you wouldn't be able to get done for $12 million bucks. You could, I mean, it would just reduce. So, I think that we would have some minimum amount that we would say, "Okay, we can't do it for that." Uh, and then lastly, the resolution has language that says that the board and the administration will make sure that you take all, you know, all efforts not to jeopardize the tax-exempt nature of these securities. So, we'll be selling these to investors, and they'll be tax-exempt investments to the investors. So, we have spending requirements. Uh, you can't use the money to benefit private party, all these types of things. Now, you've got your lawyer and Amy and myself to keep an eye on all of that, make sure that you don't violate anything, but, uh, you are promising not to, not to violate anything.
Boy, that is a hard time.
Anyway, any questions about the resolution? Uh, there's a bunch of other language in it, but these are the, these are the key takeaways in there. I mean, did you have anything that you wanted to add to, to the documentation? Uh, if you want to print out that stuff and...
No. It's a lot of trees.
A whole lot of trees. All right. So, on to the next, now I broke it. There we go. With your board approval tonight, we will then move to the next stage. So, I didn't want to have this resolution ready to go until we do, we were getting close to the part to get started. To, uh, tomorrow, with your, uh, approval, uh, the, your financing team will be traveling to Chicago to meet with Moody's about the rating. So, if you remember, the rating is like your personal credit score. It establishes your, you, you, your credit quality. That credit score will directly tie to the interest rate that we receive. The score, strangely enough, is not tied to the security of the COPs, like your ability to pay. It's actually tied to your general credit score. So, they review your general credit score, and then the COPs has a, a, a rating grade that's one grade below your general credit score. So, sort of interesting way that they handle that whole thing. Uh, so we'll be in Chicago. The presentation is on Wednesday morning, I think at 10 o'clock? 9 o'clock?
3:30.
9:30?
So, what's the difference there, Dave?
Two hours. Uh, and at some point, we'll get them a copy of the rating presentation. I think they would probably like to see the, the rating presentation. We've been working on it for about two months. It would take somewhere around there. Uh, the presentation itself, uh, there's two analysts from the rating agencies that we'll meet with. So, we're on a big table. The finance team sits there nice and quiet, and then your, you know, Mike and Amy put on a one and a half to two hour job interview that's worth, you know, who knows, $500,000 in interest.
Oh, someone.
So, no pressure on them, but typically, what they have to do is represent all aspects of the school district, from the financial, demographics, local community, quality of education, board capability, the whole picture, and, uh, and have to do it in an hour and a half without delay. But a lot of fun. Once we get the rating back, that should be on May the 29th, uh, then we're ready to show the investment to the investing, investing marketplace. The investing marketplace is made up of mutual funds, insurance companies, banks, uh, corporations, in some cases, individuals. And so, they'll have a couple of weeks to review the offering circular, which is like a stock prospectus. It'll have a rating in there, describe everything about the district. And then on June 2nd, or June 6th, if everything is, goes according to plan, that's the day that we start the process of negotiating the interest rates with the investors in the marketplace. Takes about two to four hours. By the end of the day on June the 6th, we'll know how much money you have to work with, right? So, uh, June 27th, money hits the bank, you guys can sign contracts, and you're off to the races. So, I think, whoops.
Start timeline.
Oh. That's pretty cool.
That treasure, she's something out.
Yeah, you can, uh, huh. Do you want to do that one? So, there's the timeline. It was a visual of the timeline. Yeah, I like it. Anything you want to add to the?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, this kind of started with fits and starts. It's, it's been literally four months probably since we, we started working on, on this from a financing standpoint. And we thought that we were going to be going to Chicago to Moody's Investor Service, uh, five weeks ago, a little bit more than five weeks ago, um, and that delayed. So, it's really real now. I mean, we're going, we're presenting on Wednesday, and, um, this was really important from a timing standpoint, because I wanted, because I'm sort of a control freak, everything settled by the end of June, which is the end of our fiscal year. So, the influx of funds, the creation of, of new funds and expenditure accounts, and posting the proceeds and expenditures and all of that related to the debt issuance, I wanted it all done within this fiscal year. Not to mention that the Offering Circular, which is a 120-page document, has a lot of financial information. Currently, that financial information is as of June 30th, 2023. So, we just wanted to make sure that we got the offering out there and, um, complete and settled by the end of June.
Any more slides?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. You didn't have one with a cookie in my mouth, right? Okay. All right. Any questions?
Try it. It's slicing.
All right, treasure something. Uh, any other questions at all?
Nope.
I try to make sure you, anybody?
Oh, thank you.
Clear as mud?
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, great.
Good, thank you.
Good to see you all.
Take out a cookie for the road.
That's, that's like one day. It's okay. I'll just use your slide. You gotta show your shoes.
Hey, I don't have any notes this evening. I'm going to try to do this without notes. I've been working on the forecast for two months. We thought that, again, we were going to do this five weeks ago. So, um, I started working on the forecast and, um, just a couple other points of update. Um, I'm not sure if all of the board knows, but the fiscal '23 financial audit is complete. Um, it completed at the end of March. We did get notification that we are getting the, um, Auditor Estate Award, you know, commonly known as the Clean Audit Award. Um, that's three years in a row, fiscal '21, '22, and '23.
Yay.
Not just me, it's the whole district. It's the whole district, really, because anybody touches anything financial, that's secretaries and advisors and administrators and support staff. They all buy into the practices and procedures and policies that we put in place. So, it's everybody's award. Um, and that's something that we will make sure that we tell Moody's on Wednesday morning, three years in a row. Um, just wanted to let everyone know that the Finance Audit Committee meeting, um, was on, um, Friday, and, um, the board members that belong to the Finance Audit Committee are Mr. Engel, Mr. Zappala, and then Valerie Neider is on that meeting, as is Elizabeth Bott, and Mike and myself. And we, um, we may be opening up, up to one more person that Elizabeth Bott is suggesting. Um, that's one of those things that there's a lot of, there's a lot of analytical information. Um, so, opening it up to too many people probably is not a good thing, but opening it up certainly to our community, uh, our community members is wise. Um, transparency is, um, a big strategic factor for us. Um, and we're going to jump into the five-year forecast. Think you wrote this.
You gotta be right at the, at the computer.
That makes sense, Mrs. Walker.
Doesn't it?
So, the Ohio Advice Code requires, um, the five-year forecast. Um, it's required in the fall and required, um, an, um, an update, excuse me, in May. Um, it's very important to realize that the assumptions, this big document that you have, most of its assumptions, there's only three pages of forecast. Um, the assumptions and the associated graphs and such that depict the actual history of the district and the forecasted activity of the district is very important. Um, I think the assumptions are what drive the face of the forecast. Everyone seems to worry about the face of the forecast in the, the lower right corner, but it's the assumptions that drive the forecast. What's my methodology? Very conservative. Um, I would rather project conservative revenue than the overly optimistic and come in short, and I would rather overestimate on some expenditures and rather them come in lower. Um, Mike asked me one time, "Why does the forecast always turn out better than what you, you submit?" Like, "Well, if it didn't, I wouldn't have a job." So, that's basically, that's basically it. Um, the detailed schedules, in my arsenal, I have schedule after schedule. Every line of the forecast has a schedule, um, with history in it and projections for the future. Um, so if you care to look at all that stuff, like all of the documentation for the COPs issuance, come on over and I'll, uh, let you work on my computer for a while. So, I think you all know the top part of the forecast are revenues, the bottom part of the forecast are expenditures. Revenues start with line 101, real estate revenue. Uh, I kind of wish David had stayed for this, because he could provide greater insight about what's happening in other areas of the state. But 2024 is the sex annual reappraisal for Lorraine County. And, um, what is, what is assumed in the forecast, what's modeled in the forecast, is a 20% valuation increase for Class 1, which is real estate and agriculture, and a 10% increase for, um, Class 2, which is industrial, commercial, railroad, et cetera. Um, what is likely to happen, and I even communicated with, um, the Lorraine County Auditor Craig Snodgrass about this, and he told me, um, a week to 10 days ago, that what's more likely to happen is 30% increase for, for Class 1. So, um, an increase in assessed valuation of 20% for Class 1 is going to put us at the 20 mil floor, below the 20 mil floor. So, at that point, we'll never collect less than 20 mils. Um, that's not, that's not a bad thing. Um, it's a good thing. Um, but when you, when you think about it, 2027, just three years away, right, is the triennial update. So, typically, there's an increase or some type of, um, equalization at that point as well. Can this growth be sustained? It's another reason why the forecast is conservative. I know what's likely to happen because the Lorraine County Auditor told me, and he gets his values approved by the Ohio Department of Taxation, the Department of Tax Equalization. So, I know what's going to happen likely for '25 and part of fiscal '26, but what I don't know is what's going to happen in the later years, further out years of the forecast. Line 102, we collect about $1.8 million. Um, it's a significant revenue. Um, but the public utility property, um, pays full millage, whatever that valuation is, pays full millage, and those valuations don't typically increase like Class 1 valuations do. And another thing, I don't have any graphs in here tonight, um, but real estate and agriculture, Class 1, accounts for nearly 80% of our assessed valuation. Our assessed valuation is currently $728,300,300,300. Our assessed valuation is currently $728,346 and change. Line 103.5 and line 104, there's been quite a bit of activity in these two lines over this fiscal year, actually since the Fair School Funding Plan was rolled out midway through '22. So unrestricted or state funding has grown, especially this year, and I think October was our first foundation payment with the increased inputs. And that just means that the inputs are being phased in. It was 33.33, now it's 66.67. And that simply means that the funding from the state is 66% accurate, basically, of the actual district's costs. So that's why we're moving up to wanting the full phase in, that it will increase our unrestricted revenue. By the end of the fiscal year, I expect to be about $400,000 over fiscal '23. But line 104 is restricted, and I can't get in the hang of this, Mrs. Walker.
You're doing.
Okay, so here's the forecast. Fourth line down is restricted grants and aid. That's the line we're talking about right now. And that's made up of gifted funding, disadvantaged funding, career tech, catastrophic, I can't remember the other one. But you see, in 2019, we collected $168,000. In 2021, $193,000. And last year, we collected $864,000. This year, we're going to collect over $1.1 million. Some categories increased. For instance, economic disadvantage, that's $60,000 more than it was last year. And to go from two years ago at $193,000 to $1.1 million this year, that is really a significant change. Now, yes, state funding has increased, but they changed lines. What used to be unrestricted funding in line 103.5, now a lot of that funding has moved down to 104. And the student wellness base cost also falls into line 104. That's a significant, that's a half million dollar revenue stream. So the little note on the side, the Fair School Funding Plan increased funding, however more funding was directed to the restricted categories. This is just a view of our line 103.5, which is the unrestricted. This is where the basic aid comes in, and the state foundation basic aid is actually, looks like it's going to fall next year, but the line 104 is going to continue to grow. So we've also got casino revenue feeding into this line. Casino revenue was $240,000 a year. It's not a terribly significant stream. Then we're going to talk about property tax. That's about 6% of the revenue of the district. The other line, line 106, is also about 6% of the total revenue of the district, and that's made up of revenues such as tuition, school fees, so workbook fees, class fees, paid participate, and investment revenue. Investment revenue, it's actually something that we want to talk about with Moody's on Wednesday. What was $268,000 in investment revenue a couple of years ago is going to exceed $800,000 this year. So we take advantage of that, a lot of cash balances are high. Star Ohio is the state treasury asset reserve. It's managed by the Treasurer of State. We earned $35,000 last month for our balances in Star Ohio, and then we earned like $65,000 from Red Tree slash US Bank. So it's very, it's very significant stream of revenue. But keep in mind that if we anticipate that cash balances are going to be shrinking over the life of the forecast, so will interest revenues, be shrinking. The other line is advances, transfers, and insurance proceeds. We don't very often have insurance proceeds. We had them for things like the water issue here before we opened powers. We more recently had the issue with, wasn't it Christmas Eve or the day after Christmas, Mike, a year and a half ago at the high school, the wind damage, water and all that. But the advances and transfers, I just want to make sure that you understand that that money is paired, that revenue is paired with the expenditure down in the bottom, transfers and advances out. So it's really, it's kind of phantom revenue. It's not really cash. It would be neat if we could move the money out and then just reverse the transaction, but you'd have to do it by posting expenditure to move it out and posting a revenue to bring it back in. So let's move to expenditures. Expenditures are, in ways, easier to anticipate than revenues are. I think it's easier to be more accurate with expenditures than it is with revenues, because again, you don't want to be too optimistic. We have two negotiated agreements that dictate increases through fiscal '26. We also have significant staffing changes and retirements and all of that. I believe you're all aware from last year and even the prior November, that all of those individuals who are currently funded out of ARP-ESR are going to move into the general fund when ARP-ESR is dried up, which it will be by September. The other staffing changes, again, there was a couple of science teachers, a guidance counselor, a custodian. Who else is funded out of ARP-ESR, help me out?
Just a worker.
Social worker.
Social worker. Social worker. That would be a purchase service, but still, those are the types of things. That's an influx of $4.2 million over a period of just over three years in all of the different stimulus payments. And that was Coronavirus Relief Fund, it was ESR 1, ESR 2, and ARP-ESR. We have modeled retirements. I don't normally do that. Salaries were growing really rapidly throughout the five-year forecast period. And they're based by placing people on the column and staff that they are. I back out from the bottom of the compensation schedule, the, all of the grants that we have salaries and benefits come out of handle of benefits. So it's a pretty exacting schedule. It accounts for substitutes, classified, it accounts for certified substitutes, it accounts for severances that we are going to pay out, classified and certified staff. I believe we decided on modeling for retirements. We have, how many certified staff were eligible for retirement in the next three years? It was over 20.
Up to 22, so.
Okay. So again, I don't typically assume that we're going to have retirements. You don't model them until it actually happens. But I think that this is, it's a great thing to address it, assume that we're going to have multiple retirements in each year, and for the most part, model replacing those staff at the A zero. There's nothing wrong with that. We're filling the positions, but in the second year, we're saving the cost between the senior staff and less senior staff.
I want to ask a question. So right now, today, our total budget, what percentage is?
It used to be under 60. It used to be under 60, now it's 1.
Do you know what it is?
I think it's 62.94%. It's expected to be that for this year, based on my assumption. Retirement and fringe benefits, understand that retirement and Medicare grow at the same pace that compensation grows, 14% of growth and 1.45% for Medicare. And then we have insurance renewals modeled in the forecast. Next year is 6.5% for LERC Medical, 5% for Dental, 0% for Vision. And in the other years, we have modeled 8% for insurance and prescription. That is an industry average. Unfortunately, it can't be really anticipated that LERC is going to fare any better than what the industry percentage is. We think they may. Was that accurate?
Yes.
I knew you wouldn't even. It's okay. We don't know, though, that the LERC consortium will perform better. We don't know what's going to happen aggregately, globally, in the insurance market. So 8% seems reasonable. And still, you see quite a change in the cost of benefits throughout the forecast, going from 8.8% this year to 10.8% in the last year. Does anybody have any questions so far about compensation for benefits? Purchase services, you'll notice on the next screen that 419 is Other Professional Services. Should I go Larry? Other professional services is growing rather fast. 423 for repair and maintenance, and all of our utilities, 451 through object code 453 are increasing. Here's a quick little snapshot. This is my calculation schedule, has all of the object codes and the description of the object code, what we expensed in fiscal '21, '22, and '23, and what we expect to expense in fiscal '24, the current year. You see where I highlighted or outlined red? Those are, so I'm pretty rapidly moving costs. And what I will say, before you guys ask me, if there's an area of the forecast that I would change if I could, I'd be tweaking purchase services today. And the forecast is, you know, it's a piece of paper, right? You write on it, and then you come back to it two hours later. Sure, I like the way that looks, or I think I need to do more research on that, or whatever. It's only valid, it's only accurate, if you will, at the point that I prepare. So this was last Thursday, done. I was done last Thursday. So purchase services are growing, and one thing, I don't have any other slides, but two years ago, when the Fair School Funding Plan changed mid-year, community schools and open enrollment out are no longer taken out of our foundation payment and expensed as an expenditure. They're direct funded now. So even though we no longer charge an expenditure for our open enrolled out students or our community school students, we are still exceeding what our purchase services expenditures were in prior years. There's just a lot of areas that are difficult to contain here. For instance, repairs and maintenance, $140,728 in fiscal '22 is 225,750 the next year. I've got it capped at that for this year. I mean, with what we've expended and what we still have open and purchase orders, we could exceed that. We are not writing purchase orders anymore. Purchase orders have been shut off, so to speak, for the general fund for about two months. No, I guess not two months.
Eighty-five that year, lower. So much lower than the year before. It was like before it was 22, and then one more year, then 25. So what makes that one year so much lower?
140.
It went from 140 up to 225.
But the year before that, it was higher, 222.
I would have to pull actual vendor detail more in.
It's interesting that it went down so much.
I see that. Thanks for pointing that up. I can't answer the question right now. I can always write that down and get back with you. That's the thing, I can get lost in the detail, and I have rabbit holes that I jump down every single day. I'm serious. I jump into the detail, and that makes you pay attention to something else, and pretty soon, you're paying attention to something else, and everything is a rabbit hole. Every piece of detail kind of makes you jump into more.
More of the year, which still much.
More research.
22 on maybe 42. And 21 is 22 of the shrub, that they kind of balance back.
I wouldn't be surprised, and we've talked about this all the time, and sometimes, especially summer projects, because that's when fiscal year switches over, so sometimes you get something that doesn't get finished, and now the money's pushed to the next year, or something, something gets done early, it's going to be put. So you could have had a situation where two things occurred, and it was put in different years, and so, yeah, those kind of things happen.
We're writing purchase orders right now for gym floors to be refinished, but that expenditure, we're not actually going to pay for it until after July 1st, so it'll land in the next year. So that's a good point, Mike.
Something happens.
Utilities, telephones really not that high, but electricity, natural gas. We just got a corrected billing from Ohio Schools Council of Gas, and it's an additional $12,000. So we are definitely going to exceed $146,000. Now, that's printing. Let me tell you a little bit about printing. The natural gas will likely exceed $215,000. Down below on printing, you'll see that it went from 149.8 to 207. And that's because we were paying two copier contracts. Remember, we got new copier contracts, but the new copier company gave us a hundred and some thousand dollars to pay off our old copier lease. So again, you see increased expenditure in '23 that we won't experience in '24. That's a good thing. Tuitions for special education, those are significant expenditures in the forecast. Let's see, transportation, purchase services has been growing. So any other questions about purchase services detail?
Open enrollment out, is it any type of, or just special?
That's any. That's any. But again, we don't do that anymore. Partway through the fiscal year, they changed how they funded, and now they fund those places automatically. They don't deduct from ours to give to the community school or to the other school that open enrolls our students.
Is it the voucher?
Definitely an expansion of voucher program. So you see on the side, fiscal '25, '26, '27, and '28, I have anticipated expenditures. Again, those could be tweaked all day long. So we just looked at purchase services. The next line, line 304, Supplies and Materials. And this line includes like any repair parts for the maintenance department, for the transportation department. It includes instructional supplies, office supplies. It includes textbooks. Textbooks are object code 520, and you'll see on the next slide, there's some interesting information on textbooks. But this year, we're required to adopt new curriculum for dyslexia, and next year for the science of reading. And those curricular materials don't come for free. Now, I will say, the state gave us about $198,000 for new materials, high-quality instructional materials for the science of reading, but they did not give us anything for dyslexia. And was that, that's CKLA, right? And that was $600,000. $50,000, I think, that we were able to spread into two payments last year, or this year, I should say, and then we'll pay another payment in August for the other half, which is another $364,000 of late. So we defer payments to smooth the impact. But the science of reading that we are just writing a purchase order for now, how much was that might be?
Kathy?
So we have our safety protocol, and after this semester, we're here, we're at about $400,000 total.
Very, very material sum of money.
And $9,000 intervention curriculum, which we're also providing.
We're supposed to be reimbursed, right?
They sent us almost $198,000 for high-quality instructional materials that are supposed to be used to defray the costs of the curriculum materials.
Well, we spent about a million. So there you go.
Again, diesel fuel, gasoline, repair parts, other commodity-type items, anything metal, we've experienced a huge increase in repair parts. Mike and I have talked about this, most of our fleet is newer than 2018, right, our bus fleet. So our repair costs should be decreasing, but the costs of the metal parts and such are increasing so much that it's hard to find any. But the costs of the metal parts and such are increasing so much that it's hard to, to find any, any savings there. We, we look all the time and ask questions, but, um, if, if it's not one thing getting your bottom line, it's, it's definitely going to be another. So this is the supplies and materials. You can just see the categories on the left. Five eleven, instructional supplies, office supplies, five twelve. There's supplies there for the nursing clinic. That's gone up a bit, um, from last year, but down from fiscal twenty-two. So it, it's just kind of volatile. But you see that our software expenditures have increased substantially and it, it could increase even more. A lot of our curricular software was being funded out of our ESTR fund and other ESTR funds before that. So, um, I do know that you're evaluating all the different curricular softwares that are used in the district, Mrs. McKenzie. They're, they're evaluating the software used in the district and where we can pull back and, and not use them or right-size the number of licenses, whatever, always looking at cost. Again, there's maintenance costs, transportation costs. You see in two thousand twenty-one, two hundred eighteen thousand was spent on maintenance and transportation supplies, but we're expected to spend three hundred fifty seven thousand this year. It's pretty, it's pretty astounding. So, um, our capital line is the same as it was in November. I believe three hundred twenty-five thousand for next year and one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, um, through twenty-six, twenty-six through twenty-eight. And that's because our capital maintenance plan is still under construction. You're supposed to laugh. This is where you laugh. Other financing sources, um, those, remember, are tied to the other financing revenues of above. Incumbrances, um, I believe in the last broadcast, I had eight hundred thousand dollars in incumbences at year end, just to refresh your memory. Those are purchase orders that we write in fiscal twenty-four currently that will stay open until twenty-five, when we pay on them or close them. And that's just, we've been, um, trying to get departments and the schools to close general fund purchase orders as long as they don't have any obligations against them, so we're trying to get early start on that. We're just, uh, we're just six weeks from fiscal year end. So this is an actual look at the forecast. It's been condensed. This was, um, a view that Dave Conley suggested we develop for use in the reading presentation to Moody's. But it is definitely easier to read. There's not a lot of open space in it. You can easily see the changes year to year. You can see the fund balance as a percent of revenues at the very bottom. That's interesting. We went from forty point seven six to forty-six point four two. We peaked in twenty-one at fifty-three point twenty. And last year was forty-nine, just under fifty percent. Our fund balance at the end of the fiscal year was fifty percent of revenues. So this is the forecast view then, twenty-four through fiscal twenty-eight. You see, all the things we just talked about, revenues are remaining relatively consistent. All other operating revenue, two point five million this year. We received, um, by surprise, basically, um, in the quest this year that, um, we can't assume will happen again next year. So two point five this year, we expect to receive two million two thirty-two. And again, recall that the all other operating revenue includes school fees, class fees, pay to participate, investment revenue, et cetera. Our total expenditures, um, obviously, you can look at that dark salmon line, five point zero five. Phone expenditures grow from forty-two point three million to forty-seven point three million. You see in the blue line, there's deficit spending in all years of the forecast. You see cash balances declining. You see the incumbences at seven hundred thousand dollars. And then down at the bottom in line eleven point zero two, a property tax renewal. And that is the two thousand twelve operating levy that needs to be renewed. Half the year represents one million four hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. And then on line thirteen point zero two, we anticipate needing new operating heavy funds sooner than later. We have, um, I recall my first few years here with Mr. Sayers, and every year we'd say, we're, we're financially stable through two thousand eighteen, then two thousand twenty, then moved it out to two thousand twenty-two. And even with the influx of four point two million dollars in stimulus monies in the form of ESTR, et cetera, our expenditures have outpaced the past.
So, way that I'm reading this, I'm right or wrong, but you're, if we did this, let's just say it's real, that we would go to the public and ask them for money in twenty-six and then go back in twenty-eight to renew something. So you're asking for money there too, is that what you're saying?
We're asking for a renewal in twenty-seven. The renewal would come in twenty-seven, at the latest, twenty-seven. That was the original two thousand twelve levy, okay? That needs to be renewed every five years.
Okay.
Okay? And the new money we would ask for, we're modeling four point nine million based on eight hundred and forty million dollars in assessed rev, um, assessed valuation, would be presented likely to the community November of twenty-five to collect half of the year in fiscal year twenty-six.
So twenty, twenty-five and twenty-seven?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, as we did the last time, May of twenty-two, we renewed essentially a year early. So we could probably move that renewal up a year. We had really excellent response at the, at the polls in May of twenty-two. About sixty-five-ish percent voted for the renewals. That's wonderful. Nobody, no treasurer likes to stand up here and talk about needing new money. We like to stretch it out as long as possible. And, um, I, I'm not, I'm not a person to ask for anything for myself either. So it's, it's, it's doubly hard, knowing that we, we work in this public environment and we're supposed to be stewards of, of what the community gives us. But that's also twelve-year-old money, essentially, right? So it, it's kind of hard. This is a really good view of what the cash balance has done since two thousand ten. Steve Sayers did a great job working, um, with what he had to work with when he came here. And what I, I want to say in public is that in a way, it was a dream for the decisions that Mr. Sayers had to say about staffing. We were in a period of declining enrollment. The district needed to be right-sized. We didn't have cash. It was the Great Recession. It was Senate Bill Five where nobody wanted scrutiny on their, their compensation and their benefits. At least public employees didn't want it. And so Steve was able to reduce positions, is it, Mr. Muller, thirty-eight positions? Something like thirty-eight or forty positions over the course of, of many years, eight, nine years. And not replace those. That's what attrition is, is you're not replacing those senior teachers, you're taking advantage of the savings. But you're also right-sizing the district, the right number of pupils to a certain number of teachers. So he had this perfect storm. It's not diff, it, I mean, it's not easy ever making cuts. It's never easy making cuts. But that is definitely the path of least resistance, attrition. We're even in a position right now. We don't have declining enrollment. We have growing enrollment, not fast-growing enrollment, but it could be. There is a lot going on economically and, and residential developments in this area. We could spike enrollment very quickly. So look at the cash balances, what was five point five million at the end of two thousand ten, peaked in two thousand twenty-two at twenty-one point seven million. We're expected to end the year with about eighteen point nine million. And that, that decreases throughout the forecast, if we can go back. And the cash balance is expected with renewals and new operating money to be twelve point three at the end of fiscal twenty-eight. So this is my summary. By the time we present, um, a new levy to our voters, it will have been at least thirteen years since new money has been requested in the community. It's modeled here as going out to the voters in November twenty-five. Here, it's a four point nine mil levy based on an assessed valuation of eight hundred and forty million dollars. As always, our goal is to ensure financial stability through prudent spending and strategic budgeting. We want to maintain high standards for fiscal responsibility and stewardship while developing a budget that meets the goals in the new strategic plan. What's kind of funny is that this is something that I say in every forecast and this is what the strategic plan says a lot of our financial goals. There's people in the room that have joined into, um, the strategic planning, so they could verify what I say here. Again, this is in every forecast. Amherst is consistently performing at the top twenty percent of the state and yet we have expenditures per pupil in the lowest twenty percent. This is something really to be proud of and that's how we can make one levy stretch for that long. I just want to thank everybody. This ended up being longer than I thought and why they didn't have notes because I don't think I forgot anything. But thank you to everybody, the superintendent, my treasurer's office, um, the administrative staff, the financial audit committee, and the Board of Education for ongoing guidance and support.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Well done.
Yeah, well done. Thank you.
We'll, we'll wade into the recommendations?
Yeah.
Take a break.
Yeah. I just took a break. Okay, let's go. All right, so this evening, uh, the board has, um, meeting minutes from the April twenty-second regular board meeting. The April twenty twenty-four financials were in the folder. Last week for your review, there's one, then and now invoice, I believe it's Otis. That is actually a contract that the board approved last month, but we didn't have a purchase order placed when the invoice came in. That's why it's being presented to you exceeds three thousand dollars. And then, um, the return of advance, we were just talking about those. Our ESTR has been, has been advanced funds from the general fund a number of times this year. And we now have our completed application and the cash request came in. We can return the string of forty-three thousand dollars to the general fund. The five-year forecast that we just reviewed is exhibit nine F. I asked for that to be approved this evening. I had mentioned to the board that we had, um, a need to revise medical and dental rates. And in the process, we didn't just revise and correct the one plan. We moved each plan to its own schedule, so it's very, very clear and fleshed out. Those are judgments nine A to nine F. And then we have a significant number of donations for the board to approve this evening.
Motion? Some of them.
Same.
Any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Givens.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi. Are you going to address this for anything?
Yeah. So, um, this is, uh, you received an update today from the very brief. Mr. Conley went into a great deal of detail on that eleven-page resolution of what it means. And, um, it's a lease purchase agreement. It's a ground lease. It's a permission for, um, us to carry out the financing transaction. And just want to make sure everybody realizes that this resolution by law cannot be part of the consent agenda. That's why we wrote it out into a separate resolution number. So who?
Second. Support that.
You said given?
Next. Any discussion, comments? Call for the vote.
Mrs. Givens.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Muller?
Yes, Ms. Walker and I use our time for our crystal apple awards and retirements, but I do have something for thirty seconds I want to move with to share. Um, I got a wonderful letter from the Lorain County Board of Elections, uh, and I'll read it in quick. Lorain County Board of Elections would like to extend our appreciation of Marionelle Steele High School for your students' contribution in two thousand twenty-four primary election. During the evening of March nineteenth, your students were efficient with supply returns such as retrieving election supply bags and distributing them in specific areas, sorting the contents of supply bags in designated boxes as well as teardown and packing supplies at the polling location they were assigned. We recognize and applaud the following students. Adriana Charles, Austin Lugar, Ava Gillis, Groudy Vary, Cameron Delez, Ethan Stavetsky, Jeremy Knighton, Jillian George, Joshua Byers, Kaylee Richards, and McGuire McHull. So I just want to recognize those students for such a wonderful job assisting the board of elections and we're looking forward to us continuing that in the future. So, thank you, Marionelle Steele students. Thank you.
Okay, Rex.
I have longer to work today. But I didn't make the slide for, okay? I just want to say, I want to acknowledge the Amherst students that receive scholarships from the JBS. Some of you may know that, some of you may not know that. But Elizabeth Anderson received a scholarship. Sandra Dotson received a scholarship, both in the tune of five hundred dollars and those were both in teacher education exploration. Nicholas Bailey also received a scholarship for education exploration, uh, in the tune of a thousand dollars, okay? Ethan Homolaw, H-O-M-L-Y-A.
Homolaw, yeah.
Homolaw. Engineering senior was recipient of a two thousand dollar scholarship, okay? And, um, Isabel Taylor in digital marketing will receive a thousand dollars from that perspective. So, um, the Amherst students did fare very well from the scholarships from the JBS as well as all of them, plus I think three other students were inducted into the Technical Honor Society for the first time this year as well. So I just thought it would be important to share that with you as you've had some outstanding seniors at the JBS this year, as we always do, but I think it's worthy of noting that from that perspective. We, um, will not be putting an issue on the ballot in November, okay? That decision was made at the board meeting last week. We have a special board meeting tomorrow to put out to bid for some projects that we will be doing in regard to the nursing program because we have to meet a deadline. And so those bids are being opened today, so tomorrow we will be there to approve those. And special meeting so they can start to work as soon as school's out. Any questions for me?
Questions?
Okay.
Great.
Any board updates? Thank you, Rex.
Uh, really quick, so, um, I don't know if you all received from OSBA email, uh, they're asking for your opinion just on OSBA services. If you field those out, we can en, they enter you into some draft or something where we can get priority, you can win priority hotel booking or something for the ball conference, so.
Please fill that out.
I've already completed mine.
I feel fine now.
I completed mine.
Okay, good. It takes like ten minutes or less, so, to help Miss Treasurer out over here for our booking.
Thank you.
You get to pick, you get to pick.
Ms. Ms. Coogan-Beller does all of her.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Dan, yeah.
With respect to housing for Capitol Conference, so.
Thanks, Amanda. Personal recommendations?
Yeah, the board's had a chance to review all of those. Most of these at the end of the year are, are contracts for staff. Mostly A through H are staff contracts and staff summer work. Items I through M are summer help and support. But overall, I'd like to recommend the board approve items, uh, thirteen A through thirteen Q.
So who?
Second?
Second.
And then, any special comments?
Nothing I'm happy about all of them, but I'm, uh, hoping to.
I, I'd like to ask about everything, just for a brief moment. These folks, are they, do they work every day? How are they assigned, uh, to what buildings? What, what happens with this?
Those, those are really generally just as needed. A lot, a lot of times what happens is, um, during the school year, a lot of custodians take their vacation time, but their time in the summer, they, they kind of have to. So, uh, but that's when we get a lot of our work done. So oftentimes, we'll need to ask a, a couple of. So oftentimes, we'll need to ask a couple of these individuals to take the place of a custodian maybe on vacation for a few days or a whole week.
Anybody else? Here we go, please call all.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Educational recommendations?
Yeah, so I'll highlight a few. First, of course, A is our list of graduates for this school year that we're approving. Congratulations to all of them. We have school fees on here for next school year in item B. Also, items E, we're revising the calendar. We were actually able to figure out that we kind of had one day extra for staff that was unnecessary. But the good news was, the one thing everyone was missing was no days Easter. So we were able to make the Friday of Easter weekend bill school. So really, we have, I think, phenomenal calendar now for next school year.
Victory. Victory.
Yes.
So everyone is happy.
Yes, everyone is happy.
And as Ms. Hall mentioned, we do have over to the right here, item J, which is our new six through twelve E L A curriculum. And that's exciting because all six through twelve all agree to the same thing. Very often, especially in junior high school, you know, very difficult to come down to one curriculum, and they did a phenomenal job. So thanks to all the teachers and the literacy committee and Mrs. Hall for that. So if you wanna take a peek later, you're all welcome to stay as long as you like, okay? But anyway, I'd like to recommend items fourteen A through fourteen J.
So.
Please, second.
Second.
Amanda, any discussion?
Quick questions or comments? So for the, let's see, item C?
Yeah.
Program of study, so for the military seal, you know, that's being changed to instead of enlistment, it's just the seal. And they were saying that, I guess, if you bought a lot of them, you don't have to change right away. So I didn't know if you all were aware of that.
I I wasn't, but there's a you're saying there's a change with some of the requirements or.
Yeah, they added two new criteria, so you have to have evidence of acceptance of a scholarship to enter the ROTC or appointment to U S Military Services Academy. And yeah, that's pretty much about it. And then they do have new seals, I don't know when they're coming out. But if you have like, you know, if you bought a lot already, you don't have to like swap those out at this point, so just didn't know if people were aware or not. That was it.
I had a question that I asked Nick already, and it's still a bit picky. But on the school fees list, the same like zipper pouch for North of Powers is a different price. So like it's two fifty at one building and three dollar for the other. And I assume that we just thought like all of those, like that they're all the same across the board that little green pouch, are they not the same?
Well, usually the the buildings. The building coordinates the fees for their grade levels. So I I heavily doubt that probably Powers and North, for example, discussed.
Both of them same, yeah.
And it could have been a different company or could have been very similar, but yeah.
But it's the same, I think they like purchased like.
Yeah, they were not.
In one big bag.
Do we still purchase our supplies online?
I do not believe we do that.
Oh, so we don't have that program?
Not online, not online.
You know, we're you were the you were the star person of that who, you know, could just buy all your supplies online. We don't do that anymore.
You're not starting.
And why did we abandon?
I'm not sure, it's a good question. I'll look at that.
I'll hook it back to you.
Sarah, does that go to you now?
I am baking a note.
Since he did that, just saying, he was so proud of that, remember?
Well, I do I do remember use use was going like a few, a few parents slapping at, yeah, so.
And that could very well be, I just didn't know whether we still did it or not. Because I think that that when we did that, it was somewhat uniform, even some of those pricing. That's one of the reasons that you explored that when we did.
Is that correct, Amy?
We could do things, we could purchase centrally, but there's autonomy at the schools, which I think is what they preferred, so. So hopefully the fee matches the expenditure, that that's what we hope, right? So it could be a different reimbursement.
I was just surprised when you asked that.
You think that they just get together and order it?
Right.
They should order it. It's a better price, so it is.
Whenever we did, it's the same. Yeah.
Can you just record?
Well, but as as we know, we're going to be selling school things. There might be an opportunity there that could be a whole new program that Sarah can explore from that perspective.
I am, it would be my pleasure.
From that perspective. Okay, I have another comment. I know you're thinking, Rex, why are you talking to me?
Yeah.
On items E, F, and G, I just think that as we go through this next year, because these contracts are for next year. When we look at the total sum of those contracts, I think that Sarah is an expert at this. When Sarah came here, she did an excellent job of streamlining that. I think that we need to ask Sarah to take a deep look at some of those contracts because the number of students that those contracts service is limited. And so I think that anything that we could possibly do to bring some of those services that we are using outside of our district to our district, it could be a savings for us in the long run. Because instead of us paying someone, those someones could be paying us from that perspective. So I would ask you, Sarah, in your assistant superintendent role and curriculum special needs abilities, okay? To take a look at that.
For sure.
Because I think that it's important that we keep a handle on that because it's a lot of dollars which we have to spend. I'm not saying we we can do away with it. We have to spend, but it's an opportunity for us to be the recipient of some income as well.
So maybe it's possible, like transportation to his place or nothing.
No.
Tuition or just.
Tuition, tuition. If I had to guess, I would say that one of those contracts is well over two hundred thousand dollars. And and I say that from experience stuff, but I just know that they're they're not cheap at all. So when you think about that, and with the with the number of students they serve, I think it's important that we just keep our eye on it. How can we, you know, instead of us expending two hundred thousand dollars, we could possibly hire people and have people come to us from other locations in other schools in the area that they'll provide the services and stuff. Because we have done that. We have done that with certain things. And I don't know what the needs of those folks are, but that's what I'm saying. That's why I'd like Sarah to take a look. So it won't happen for this school year, but she's got a year to look on that as long as as well as opening a new store. I have no further questions or comments.
Anyone else?
No.
Oh, none of us. So back to the high school stuff, so you can ask before, but we have the college credit plus. I guess have we looked at the early college one as well? Like why do we prefer college credit plus over the early college? Or have we looked at that before?
Um, early college in reference to.
Early college high school, like.
Yeah.
Okay. I I just want. Yeah, we just haven't explored that. We just, we have a lot of different CCP college credit plus agreements with multiple universities. But I mean, I just never explored the early college program as our president staff, so it's something to look into. Just to see what the requirements are.
Oh, I was just curious.
Sarah?
Sounds like a sounds like a summer project there, Mrs. Hall. Write that down.
Delegation.
Making a note.
You guys probably wish these two people would have vanished.
I was just was just was curious, so there's different options, not trying to do away with CCP at all, this is true.
Done, Amanda?
Yeah.
Rex?
But yeah.
Note, I'm not close to my notebook pen.
Call for the vote, please?
Yes, Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mistress, recommendations?
Yeah, we have items A through G. A is the resolution that we have developed from our lawyer to give us more direction on how to sell schools and certain property and follow protocol as far as when it comes to looking at community schools first and also then a public auction. Item D is, I want to just thank Mark and Teresa for attending the construction manager risk interviews. We selected through our score sheet C T Taylor Construction, who is gonna be our construction manager of risk, and they were the same group who helped us build Powers Elementary School. So it's a good relationship that we will continue with them. And then item E real quick is there's no increase for breakfast or lunch prices for next school year, so they should remain the same. So I recommend items, business items fifteen A through fifteen.
So.
Second? Fourth minute. Rex? Any discussion?
No.
Board, comment? Voting? Vote, please?
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi. We have no need for executive session, Rex.
No.
Um, we need to decide what we're gonna do about the comment.
Comment, yeah, the awards. We got the email out, Rex out, and we responded to Kathleen.
Are we deciding how many, how many people are going to receive it? We have six nominees.
I I I didn't respond, I looked at it.
So in the past, we have two.
So I didn't know what what you what what you really wanted.
Well.
Because it didn't say, give us your thoughts. It said, look at it.
But it did, it says we have this, we have six nominees, it's more than usual, how many awards are.
Oh, how many do you?
How many do we want to give out?
And in the past, we've only done two.
What what is the recommendation?
I.
I think it's open.
It's open, it's just we're discussing what we want to do so that we can then vote on who receives it. And we have to do it quickly.
So my 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 thought.
It's always been two.
It's always been two. My thought process is, and I could go either way, the thought process is, you know, if you I know that all the kids wrote a letter, but it means more, I think, if you, I I don't know. It's right.
So we should also.
I just don't, I don't remember in the past.
Be, and on this day, we're beat six every year.
It's they do two every, they've always done two.
I just don't remember in the past us having a vote at all about it. So I didn't know how many nominees there are.
It it.
To know.
In the past, there was a board member that was a part of it, and that board member took care of all that. They read all of the applicant, read all the letters, and they're the one that picked the two. Why we haven't done it the last two years, I don't know, and all of a sudden we're being put back in it again?
Right.
So they're asking us what we wanna do.
I personally say we need two.
Okay, that's right. So who?
But I'm not, I'm, you know, it's a group, what do you all think?
I think two's fine.
Two's fine.
Because if we do six every year, but next year we have ten, are we gonna do ten?
Yeah, right, that's.
You know, I'm saying at some point in time, a student will get endless of them. And then the significance or the value of getting that becomes diluted in life.
Right.
Okay?
So how are we deciding to, or are we each gonna?
Do we decide that?
That's what I read.
There's a sounder to it.
It's like.
I think I think, no, it's one board member, so some, we just need to pick a person, I think, that does it. I mean, that way we can just take care of it. We're gonna have two every year and one board member be assigned to doing it.
Okay, I think you know.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm just.
Morgan do it.
Morgan do it. All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Morgan.
I appreciate that.
I do.
You got something, Mark?
Yeah.
No, we're done.
No, I have.
Don't shut up.
Oh, you.
No, I I just, I'm so sorry. I'm just telling Miss Santos the two people that are chosen then, right? That's all I have to do on that end?
But you have to, you need to read.
Refuse.
I already had to pull up, okay? Yeah, just give her the two, yeah, okay.
So the only thing I wanted to say is I just wanted to say thank you as the nation's director for the city of Amherst. Thank the groups that came out on Saturday for Beautification Day. We had the football team, we had the volleyball team, we had the soccer team. Mrs. Marty and her son came, and then we had some other groups that came too. But, you know, normally we say nine to noon, and it took us an hour and fifteen minutes because we've had so many people that showed up, and it was just phenomenal. I mean, it's just so nice to see all the the students from the school district come and help, so I just wanna say thank you. Was it beautifying Amherst, you said?
Yeah, downtown, yeah.
The county, the whole county.
For a little.
It was the Lorraine County.
Yeah, it's a Lorraine County Beautification Day, but Amherst, sometimes, most of the time ours lines up with the county, but sometimes it doesn't because they do it like, I'm gonna make this up, the third Saturday of every month. But ours is always the Saturday after Mother's Day. We keep it the same, so, yeah.
It's just for us, but thank you.
So real quick, just one, you know, if everyone can look at their calendars for a board retreat date for July. We were thinking maybe Wednesday, July twenty-fourth. Just for a day, we'll worry all the details and look everything out after that, but.
Pencil and you.
I'm okay with Lorraine.
Yeah.
You okay with Lorraine?
Oh, yeah.
Mark?
Yeah.
Yep. More?
No.
Yeah.
We're putting it on our calendar, Simone.
Alright, yeah, so thank you.
We have an agenda that will last about sixteen hours, so if you're reading.
Never mind.
Oh, what?
Say no.
Like what time will we start?
We're getting more.
We don't know that yet. I'm just gonna put. I'm gonna put. All day.
Uh, we've been doing Calipari, correct? I mean, we we.
Well, that.
Looked there as well possibly, but we wanted to change based on the proposal.
Maybe toss ice cream place in the lobby? Did she say ice cream?
Broken.
Bob.
Before we adjourn on business item A, a fifteen A, we're going to post that immediately because there's a sense of a sixty-day requirement there. Is that your intention?
Oh, assistant superintendent and Ms. Treasurer.
Yeah, my intention, I know I actually got vacation next week, Amy, but I was possibly gonna sit there and have our lawyer come with us and work out all the fine details to get it going, yes.
And do you think you're gonna publish it in the building or are you gonna publish it in the paper? Just ask, just so I don't.
Or the building.
And that's what I, that's what I was hoping, but I didn't know for sure. Because that way hopefully we can take some action on the high office.
Correct.
And and we've already decided, oh, so it's an auction, okay.
And also, I have another thing. I received a phone, see, I've got a lot today.
You're busy, busy guy.
I I I received a phone call today from the Lorraine Historical Society inquiring about the ship property. Uh, wanting to know if we thought that we were interested in selling that property or not selling that property. And I told them that I didn't know, but I would, I would bring that up from that perspective.
No.
They don't want the whole property, they just want part of that property, which I immediately thought in my mind, no, but I did not respond to them because I said, there's a board meeting, I would bring that up to all.
Did they say what they want it for, just to have a theory?
Yes, they did tell me what they wanted it for because they inherited the house.
Oh.
And they want a place to park a bus.
No.
They want a place to park a bus when they take tours through that house. So I will just respond on behalf of the board, unless you would like to, you mean we give all of it to you?
You're welcome to do it.
And just say at this time, we have no interest in selling that property.
Correct.
Because that was the 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 person who called me, said we knew that you owned that, but we didn't know whether you still own it, and I said, you still own it. But I don't know what the status, so I basically talked about it. But I was looking at this time, we're interested in selling it.
You can also share too that after we look at the process, we now all realize that it's it's a public auction.
Right.
We cannot, we can sell to a specific person.
And and we're not waiting to break the personal line at all.
At our, right.
So no, we're we're not interested in selling it at this point.
Yeah, that was really interesting to find that out.
Especially that that has got community schools.
Breaking first.
The process.
Right. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have nothing else.
Wait, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn, and she said.
It'll be quiet.
I even, I even went, no.
Amy, please, Polly.
Mrs. Gillis.
Yes.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Dr. Messer, too. Yeah, Mr. Zappa.
Yes.